Yeah, I'll call the meeting to order. Would you please stand for the flag of allegiance?
Our flag of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Today, we, today we called a special meeting to address the opioid matching grant. If any of you or some of you were to the commissioners meeting and, and some of them maybe watched it on Zoom, but that was one of the items they have. And today we have September McConnell from the community foundation. We have Commissioner Banks here that's going to explain what, what they're wanting us to approve.
Thank you for pulling together very quickly. I appreciate it. We've told, we've told Grant how the community was kind of doing. But just told Sean, I think we've done six months of the working community. So we had a very short time period.
Could you go?
Oh, yes.
It was a very short time period. The community foundation, I think a lot of you for different reasons, right? But the community foundation is a public charity and has existed since nineteen ninety-one. When I talk about you guys coming together quickly, this is the first board meeting I've been in twenty-five years. So they're really into the board. Well, I mean with you this morning, but that's how important it is to us. We obviously work with people who want to make their own death drop at Dallas go further. We do grants to various causes in the community, non-profit organizations, a lot of scholarship dollars. About, oh, four years ago, we had done a community focused group, a series of community focused groups to work to see what the needs were that were emerging in the community. Obviously, we heard from manufacturing community, talked about vocational training, was missing in, in Little County. The jail, we, we gone through the jail study and saw the overcrowding issue, saw the recidivism rate was seventy-seven percent. We started to dig into that and figure out what's happening, that it's so high. And what we learned was there was not a lot being offered in terms of mental health, drug assistance. So they were coming in with issues and then turning around going right back out and they come back in again. So a vicious circle. Reflective of that, we thought, we were hearing a lot from our social service providers, Mission Twenty-Five Center, county school, seeing kids in a level of trauma that they had not seen before, that they felt their staff were ill-equipped to deal with in terms of what they could do with mental, mental health. So hearing all those things, we put together, you'll, you'll see in front of you, the next level of Little County, kind of a coalition or a collaborative of private government foundations, nonprofits that came together. We're all tied into this one. The first thing that this group did was to identify the problem that was happening out at Miami Village at the time. And we're really worried about the kids that were running around out there without the right kind of supervision. And so through a lot of work in over a couple of years, we have the community center out at Miami Village, which is run by Mission Twenty-Five. About the same time we were working on that, we started to think if we could get our handle around vocational training, we might have a solution to some of the problems. So we worked with Brandon Penrod at the time and came up with the idea of putting, we put Career Academy out at the middle school in Larwell. It's been sitting empty. And we brought in the Wood Foundation. They were partnering with us in some other things and they were all about it. Put a lot of funding into it and that was up and going. Probably the greatest thing that we take a lot of pleasure of right now is that we're seeing guys and worker elites going through with the career academy and coming out with certifications. I was just there a couple of weeks ago for a graduation and it was six, six guys. But, you know, I guess that's what hope looks like. That's what I would tell you. That's what hope looks like. We're going to give them a fresh start and an opportunity. You know, Sean and I talked from the beginning about how do we do this? How do we get our arms around this? And it's been one family at a time. And so we kind of thought, you know, if we give one family a fresh start, a better way of life, then that's a really great thing to be happening. So this particular grant that I'm here to talk to you about today, what I'm feeling to mention is that we received a large grant from Lily and Downey. So they liked the work that we were doing. They supported it, two point six million dollars. And it's been all working beautifully for about four or five years. We had, in our plan, a plan for Mission Twenty-Five to expand capacity. They think that it can probably triple the work that they're doing right now if they have the adequate space to do it. And so we were trying to figure out how do we do that? Part of that Lily money was set aside for that. And lo and behold, on the thirty-first of January, there was a web, well, it was the thirtieth. There was a webinar about twenty-five million dollars. It's available in state funding. It is not part of what you're getting through the distribution to six counties. So it's, it's a colla, it's a competitive grant. We don't know who else in the county is, or in the state is going after it. But we are of a mind that we have the funds in place to, to match what's needed. They want a match in place. One of their requirements was that a piece of funding has to come through government to next level of Little County to allow us to open the door to go in and apply for the funding. So that's why we're here today is to ask you to make a small distribution, I think, well, not small, it's generous, of twenty thousand dollars that can go to the JCAP program that will hold under the next level umbrella. We're obviously already holding money there for the classes that are taking place at the career academy. We're facilitating that. This JCAP money would be used for whatever they need necessary, but it will give us the, the goal ahead then to go and apply for the grant. They gave us two weeks to get the whole thing done and I'm telling you seriously, it usually takes about six months. The community foundation hired Transform Consulting out of Aabash and it's going to be a stellar application. So I, I have every, every hope that this money comes through and it would give Mission Twenty-Five the ability to build what they need to build, triple capacity, without having to do a public campaign where they have to go out and ask everybody here to give money out of your pockets to build something. So that's, that's my, my great name, Sean. So that's what I'm asking for today is, I think Chad had, the commissioners on Tuesday had okayed twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we did vote and approve a twenty thousand dollar contribution at our commission meeting.
Okay. Anything else you want to say, Chad?
No, I mean, I, I think that the community foundation has, has done a fantastic job of pulling together. I know Scott kind of pulled everyone into a room and we had talked, but the community foundation was a step ahead of us and had already discussed the grant opportunity. And we're very fortunate because we already had all the players together for next level Whitley County. So we already knew who to bring into the room and I think it's a great collaborative effort and something that I hope that council will allocate the funds so that we can, so that we can support this effort.
Okay. Did you want to allocate any additional funds for down the road?
Right now, just for the grant opportunity, they're just asking for a, a contribution right now so that there's a local match for the grant.
I didn't know if commissioners wanted to.
I had asked September at the commissioner meeting if it would need to be a year-over-year commitment. And she said at this time, just one time, a one-time contribution. And then we can consider later on as we continue to re, receive the opioid settlement funds. Our first, our first payment was large, but I think it was a couple of years together and then it, it really tapers off. But, you know, that's something we can discuss down the road.
When, when Chad and I talked before I contacted all of you, that, that was a little bit of our discussion. And so I wanted to make sure there was no confusion of what we were just doing today. But as I talked to a lot of you, this money coming in can certainly help the county fund that JCAP that it's going to take place at the, at the jail and that. So that's something we can think about as, as we work budgets and, and, and we know that this money's coming in because that, we haven't done that program before. We don't know exactly how much it's going to cost us or the supplies they need. But it looks like we've got some additional funds that we, we need to put someplace and, and to good, to good work for. So this might be an opportunity on that. So questions from council for September or Commissioner Banks?
You know, one of the things that I didn't mention was that probably three years ago, four years ago, we took a coalition of folks down to Lawrenceburg. You see the JCAP program down there. And I think we were all just kind of gobsmacked by what we saw. And so I really want to commend the direction that is being taken. It's a much more therapeutic environment so that you're, you're going to be trying to impact those folks that are incarcerated and make a difference.
All right.
Explain, I'm sorry, a little bit of what this.
Sure. Yeah. So this is, this is money from, I think it's Johnson, Johnson and Johnson funding the program for the opioid settlement from. So there will be more, you know, Sean was telling us the other day, it's Walgreens and CBS, they're all having to pay out to the state and the state's giving it out to the counties, cities and counties in Indiana. The first chunk of it is unrestricted. So that is the money that you will be getting, that you can do anything you want with. The other part is for abatement, which is meaning you have to go in and use it for dealing with the opioid issue. And they give a whole big long schedule of what is eligible for that funding that's under the abatement umbrella. I only went up to twenty twenty-seven and goes, more than that, you're going to be getting this money for a long time. There's going to be more other streams of it, I think, coming from these other entities. So.
The big difference in years?
I don't know. I don't know.
That, that's what caught my eye. You know, twenty twenty-two is forty-nine, twenty-three was eighty.
Yeah, I have no idea. Yeah, that's why I just pulled it off the website. The biggest difference is because they're giving you a larger amount of plan for the first two years.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to see this?
Yeah.
The, the other thing I think that we need to make note is that Mission Twenty-Five, their, their, their mission is very important and from personal experience, I've had a family member use that facility. It, it really wedged a gap for us. And I can only imagine how many more people are out there that can utilize that. So we know that they, they've been looking for a spot. We, we tried, we tried to work with them. It didn't quite work, but maybe this is a great solution to that.
The other thing I didn't mention about them that I should is that they're, they're marked out of homeless shelter mode, right? Now they are the only level three residential recovery center in the county, which is huge. It's, it's expanding what they can do three times, four times what they're already offering. So the other thing I love about that program is they keep families together as they're going through the process of getting, you know, recovery. So rather than taking mom away from kids or families splitting apart, they're keeping them together. And I think that that offers a lot of hope as well. So.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from the?
Um, I'm just curious, does, does this grant, is it going to entail putting out Narcan?
Um, not, well, I don't know if it's allowed. She'll have, I think we have, we have Narcan within your facility. Currently has two new op boxes in our county. After we have more op boxes, we're going to have two. And five, we have one at our recovery residence. We have one at Mission Twenty-Five. And so we monitor what, you know, those are a lot of options. I have five hundred doses in my office. Those five hundred doses are in that hot minute. So it will be available. That is part of the opioid settlement. This grant particularly is for building out Mission Twenty-Five's building. That's what we're going.
So the, the reason I'm asking is because there are other counties that are moving towards the same direction. And, and I certainly support JCAP. Actually, my sister-in-law is one that is JCAP.
Okay.
But there are other counties that are moving towards putting opioid centers in other locations, including hospitals, fire department. And I want to know, is this the direction that you're going to take?
I'm glad you're here to let me know the answer.
Yes. Okay. So I don't, the county health department, but we do provide op, opson that anybody who's like, you know, providing opson to all the first responders, the county's three years, all the schools, and even the police officers. We can find dispensers, replacing them. The only problem with that is we also need sub-security cameras for that and make sure that that's monitored and we can, we're working with Mission Twenty-Five to do some more of that around the county. But we have to figure out how, who's going to fill them, how, how we're going to check them, and the person else to do that. So we are, have been doing it and we are being trained to do that.
So this brings up a lot of other questions, right? What locations will these dispensers be?
So again, Mission Twenty-Five is working with the health department and we are literally, I agree with having meetings with the health department. And there's like thirty days to go. And we've really cut down and I'm going to decide multiple locations depending on time. But it's also a buy-in for each area within the county, right? So we also need to be able to be trusted on the bar while we're going to set up so carefully and make sure that we want to be in locations.
So I guess my question here to council members is, is would you guys be willing to add these dispensers put in your front or backyard?
I don't know. You mean front or backyard? You mean like if we, let's use South Willy for example, because we're both from South Willy.
Yeah.
So if we put one to police station, you're not for that or you just don't think it's necessary?
Well, I've got other questions that are, that are going to go along with that.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking. Would, would you be willing to put this at, at the fire station, put this in the backyard of the person who's behind the fire?
I'm not sure. Just right now, this is just the start of it, the health department and everybody's just getting into it. So I, I still have a lot of questions whether, whether we need to go that far or not because this is the first I've really dug into, or you presented, whatever. So I'm, I'm just at the point where we're starting to, to think about whether we need to do that or not. I know Fort Wayne has sent them around different places. I'm not sure I'm with that or, or not. But I, I still need so much more information whether it needs to be done in South Willy, Chicago, Larwell or not. I don't know. If I'm comfortable at the fire station, yeah, probably. Or at the police station, I'd be the only two choices I'd have in South Willy. I'm sure they're going to be monitored all the time and everything, but right now I can't say because we're just getting into it.
So has anyone considered the fact that adding of these dispensers may be inviting an element outside of this county to come into this county to practice illegal opioid addiction?
No.
Because they feel safe or because there's Narcan ready?
So, you know, and that's for a primary government. And so one of Mission Twenty-Five's missions along with the health department is to help educate our community better around what Narcan does. Um, I think there's, my staff, we went through a ton of training and a lot of certification and we learned a lot. I'll be the person to say that we went through the process of trying to understand what Narcan really was and we need it. And it's been a process of, that if we know it's going to save a life, it gets worth saving a life.
Okay. So what's, what schedule drug is Narcan?
Schedule drug?
What schedule drug?
Kind of a schedule of drugs.
What class, what class of drug is Narcan?
So, so either I can go out and take it right now and it'll do no effect. It's only a binding agent for opioid and another system. Okay. But it's there. I think you won't hurt anybody particularly in your mouth.
Okay. So who can it administer? Anybody?
The person has, you know, there are situations, it's not to be breathing and have situations.
So I, I guess my real quick question is, are there any, are there any other first responders in here? You're certified as a first responder for any training?
Yeah, I'm certified.
I, I mean, but you've taken, you've taken EMT first responder training and you're certified to the.
I'm certified as a first responder. I'm not, my training as far as through the fire department was twenty-something years ago.
Okay. So the, the reason.
Sorry, let me finish my answer, please. We're, we're letting you talk this, let me talk. The train that I received, you know, better than twenty-five years ago wouldn't still be up to date as far as administering. But you've got to remember we're police officers and we all carry Narcan. That ninety times, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, we're the first ones on scene. And there's instances of that. And to address maybe one of your other points, I would tell you too, that this isn't a lot different if you wanted to draw a parallel to having a lifesaving equipment as far as at a swimming pool to save the throw to someone that's drowning. We're not saying it's okay to drown. We want to help you if you're there. We're not saying it's okay to use these drugs, but if we can keep somebody from dying from it, then we kind of have a responsibility, just the same as putting a lifeguard at a swimming pool. It's, there's parallels, if you can call it.
Absolutely. That one goes to Narcan. That would be that first question.
Okay. So I'm, I'm a retired firefighter, first responder, fire medic, instructor, two, three, and N F A. And things may have changed since, since I left. But as a first responder, when we're running on patients, right? That if, when we're using, when we're using an aspirin, we should not administer that inhaler to that patient. This is legal for us to do that. We can't give aspirin to a patient. We can bring the inhaler and put it in their hand, but we cannot physically get to it. Same with aspirin. If we, we were negligent legally if we did that. So now I'm questioning this with Narcan. How can we legally, how can we legally do that and just anybody do it? Especially if we're binding through, through the medical field.
They used to be covered of this.
Long term, so, I think long term. In fact, it's going to be overtime if you see.
All right.
And, and the difference probably being in what you were able to do and not do would have been covered by whoever the doctor was that oversaw your operation and what they allowed you to do and not allowed you to do. Wouldn't have been necessarily illegal for another entity, another EMS, another trained fire department to administer an inhaler or aspirin. Wouldn't have been illegal. It had been what that particular, protect, particular supervisor or provider that was a doctor allowed you all to do.
Possibly, but that's why I'm actually telling you that. Like, yes, everybody worked on those options. Yes, that actually fell under the law. Not, not. Um, I, I guess I, I question too is, uh, later on down the road at, at this community and for example, Allen County. What, what's going with Orange County? You can tell. If their funds run out and their counties cannot any longer sustain this, again, is that going to bring this element into this county?
I really don't believe that anybody's going to drive the bus.
Then most of the people who end up needing Narcan don't go into the evening with the thought that I better have some Narcan with me because tonight's going to be the night that I overdose. So I think, you know, I think that I understand where you're going with the question and with the series of questions. But we can, it's a classic what if, you know, what if they run out? What if they come to Whitley County? You know, maybe Whitley County has that opportunity to save somebody's life.
Let me, let me share something with you. In twenty seventeen, the Anna Hospital Association released the data that said for every hundred prescriptions written in Little County, ninety-four were for overdose. Ninety-four. So we don't have to worry about anybody coming over for it. There's enough people here that we've got to worry about our own. And as a parent, I will tell you, never for the grace of God go I. And if my child needed it, I would be really grateful that it was there. And in that team, we review the overdose cases, the death by overdose in the county. And I can tell you, in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, there's been a lot of deaths in the nation. But twenty twenty-five, that's unacceptable. Five in our smaller working community. And so these community partners come together every month.
Do you need this name?
And it was most dangerous. We try to identify as Narcan or not. And oftentimes it's not. So if we couldn't have Narcan at the scene, it could have. And so why would we not?
We don't know that with every finger in the body. Most of these that we looked at, we found that we were able to get them. It's mostly accidental. They were on purpose. And we didn't know what was going to happen. So the lead has in the last quarter, twenty-two, twenty-one, blood poisoning. So people who are, who are sick and are seeking out medical help. So I think that that should show that if it is more available for the one who's taking, we've offered it to families of victims who have overdoses. Some take it, some don't. But I think the fact that it's getting out there more, that it's not something that's an arse to make. If you have that issue. Opioids, it's not going to happen to the rest of us anyway. But we're covered by the law.
So will, will this need to maybe offer a clean needle so we can, so we can start to slow down on the head to fight?
When they do have that, needle programs in the state, Allen County is one of them. If you offer that, we cannot use subtle breath on for those changes. And we get the county party on board that cannot have to go that way. And we can approach that. And Allen County has done that fifty-two, reduce the number of cases involved.
So along with that too, abortion is becoming illegal in the state of Indiana. Do we offer abortion still for people that make that, make a plea that they didn't make that, that they wanted to make? And do, do you support that illegal activity too? I mean, we're opening Pandora's box here. Where does it stop?
It stops with having a system in place that helps people stop.
We've had Narcan for eight, three years or four years this year and we have had an increase that I know has been putting it all. I suppose our credit center is the health, I know, is the government office to get that, to try to be tracked and reported. So the more problems that have those available somewhere where there isn't, I don't know, we could be more likely going to use that.
So along with these dispensers then, are we also going to add AEDs to them? So if Narcan doesn't work, we have to be able to possibly break it back.
You know, I'm looking at maybe the points to, or lift the AEDs on the, the lifesaving issue altogether. I know in schools, we have probably kids with our AEDs in school system for one class or two.
So is that what is being considered in the grant as well?
This grant is to build, it's to build a building. It's to build Mission Twenty-Five, the building, the homeless shelter that's up on the hill. The old motel is in bad shape. They need to expand. And so it's for their building. That's what the grant's for.
It, unfortunately, actions have consequences. And when we make bad decisions, then the actions have consequences. And so, and unfortunately, sometimes those consequences are a little more severe. But at the same time, we're, we're at a point where we've kind of become a two-tiered society. You know, we have, we have these people that are, are dreaming our society to the fact that we should, we just accept that we have this opioid crisis and we should treat the symptoms of it, not the actual cause. Right? We need to get down to the cause. And perhaps the money would be better spent getting down to the cause rather than treating it.
Did you not hear what I just said about the fact that we are setting up educational programs, mental health programs that are going to.
But that goes along with, that doesn't.
That stops it for, for starting down for the next one. Because if the kid doesn't know how to do it. It's a systemic problem that we're trying to address. And I guarantee you, there's nobody involved in this that is doing it for any other reason than for the well-being of the people in Little County. The well-being of Whitley County.
I, I want to put a hold on this, because this, technically what you're discussing is not our form. Our form is finances and things like that, which is part of that, because those programs cost. But that's not why we're here this morning. So you're welcome to come and talk to the commissioners or to Scott and the health department on these issues. But this is not the form, people sometimes get a little, little misunderstanding. But our form is, do we want to support this program for Mission 25? And that, I understand exactly what, we see it all the time on TV, we, we listen to it, understand what you're saying, but this is not the form for that, okay? And, and the auditor does need your name for her minutes.
Yeah, Jared White, Councilor.
But we appreciate your comments and, and so forth.
I do have a few other questions, but that's okay.
Well, no, we're, we're going to cut that off, because that's, that's not this forum, that's not the council's position. That's not what we do, we, we, commissioners have a program or something, we, we approve the financing on it or, or other things, rather than policy, you're talking about policy there. We're talking finances here, okay? So that'd be commissioners meeting or board of health meetings where you can go address that. Anything that he does, and, and if it needs money, it comes through the commissioners and then through us, okay? But that's, that's not the debate this morning, we understand what you're saying, and there are forums that you'll be able to, to address that, okay? Do you understand that?
I'm sitting here in silence, sir.
But I'd sound.
Yeah, I, I, I understand.
Well, we could, we could, we could do this for an hour here, but we're still not the forum that's going to make those decisions you're talking about. Only if it, only if it has a budget and financing with it, will it come to us.
Yeah, but you're looking at taking our taxpayer dollars, correct?
No, no, just, Jared, the meeting today, hang on. The meeting today is, is strictly 20,000 to put towards a bill. There is no other amendment, there is no other discussion, there's no other money talked about this morning. The opioid, what you want to do, we're concerned with it, we know what goes on, I watch the news too. That is not on the agenda today, that's not even talked about in this meeting. What you want to do, you need to get with, with the Mission 25 and the health department someday when, when they go towards putting lock boxes out there, they're just talking about it now, it's not a done deal, they're not moving on it. Uh, so yeah, to back up Mr. Augbrecht, we're here just for the 20,000 to put a building up, not what your concerns are. And I have your concerns like you do, but that's not what we're doing here today. There'll be another meeting where you can voice all your opinions you want on, but not, not here today.
It's not taxpayers' dollars.
Yeah.
This is, we like to settle the money that was not taxpayers' dollars.
It's come from the.
So to address your last question, why, why aren't the people that are responsible for this taking responsibility? That's essentially where this money's coming from. That's, that's, that's holding these companies accountable. And I'm offering that as an answer to your last question, that's, that's what this money is for the top.
And this money is to build the building, to allow them to start the education for these people to take accountability for what has happened to them and correct it, that's what this building's about.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. You know, if Scott, you can get with Scott, and then he can keep you informed of, of what's going on and if there's meetings that you can attend. And we do appreciate your comments, so. Okay, we have, we have this request on, on the floor, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go with the commissioners for the 20,000.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Tom, a second by Kim, that we approve the 20,000 for, for the project to help Mission 25 hopefully get grant funds. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know where the money, where we're taking this money from, where it's coming from, and what all options are there for us to consider taking this money from.
The funds will come from the opioid settlement distributions that we've already received.
Okay, and where's that, is that in county general?
We have two different funds set up, one is for restricted and one is for unrestricted. And so when the state sends us, it's a specific breakdown, so we know exactly how much to put in each fund. So as of right now, we've got that 2022 total is what we received in December, I think on the night. So that's the fund balances for the restricted and the unrestricted.
So then is the motion for the restricted or unrestricted?
Where do, where do we need to take that from?
Abatement, it's the abatement money, yeah, take it out of the abatement money, which is.
And there's 115,000 that we received in '22 on that store.
Is that restricted or unrestricted? I'm sorry.
The restricted.
That's restricted.
So is that, is that part of the motion?
Yes, is that part of the motion?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of approving the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed the same, passes unanimously.
Can I add, just say one more thing?
Yes.
So as the first discussed, more and more of this money, as companies get money through the government to us, these things are coming along. So we need to start planning as early as next month of getting other projects written. Because they're going to come down in the same fashion, you've got 30 days, you've got 24 hours. So we have plans ready on the shelf that we can pull off and say, okay, how do we even get this? So we either talk amongst ourselves and our group, how do we, what do we want to see past this point? For personnel to advantage this facility, there's other things that we need to do in the county, other things. So we need to have those plans ready to draw down and put up.
We were poised because this, this was in place. I'll tell you right now, my board is discussing whether or not to fund Boeing Center $10,000 to get their clients to Warsaw and Fort Wayne, because there's no, they're, they're missing appointments because they don't have transportation. So we're working with council and agents to see if we can figure out how to do that. Those are the kind of things, that's entirely right. If we can pull those off the shelves, this opportunity becomes available, then we've got our plan in place, we can mow it. Thank you so, so much for, for allowing us to do this. I'm, fingers crossed that, that we've got a great shot at it and, you know, if we can save her, it'll allow her to do the work that she's supposed to do instead of having to go out and raise money, which would be really great, so.
September, I have a question before we move on. In the future, are you going to have meetings to where concerned citizens can come in and ask questions and, and?
Well, you know, we have, next level Whitley County, we have representation from all these different groups that are listed on that, on that wire, I suppose. I know that there are opportunities for, Harley has a drug abatement with the.
Positions passport speeding, and set up to the health department, the health department, every other month or every quarter. And so that'd be a good opportunity to come in. I would invite Mr. Lee Kinekaster, just to come in to talk to us at the office, Dr. Burke, so early, so we can actually get intimate on how, what we, what our opinions are, what our time is, right? Because I understand, he doesn't want the government providing a pathway for more abuse, what are we really trying to do? What's the best way? Do we start up Narcan, do we evolve needles? I mean, what, what is the culture attitude, how it's accepted? I think that's something we can talk about at an intermediate level, so that people's comfortable, like, we're not just using things that are causing more problems. I understand.
We now have a recovery engagement center in our county as well, and we'll be open in March. And in that particular building, we will be bringing presenters throughout the entire state to come and educate our community, educate our community partners, and just bring in additional training as well. Because I think the more that we know, we're more powerful with the.
Do I sign that?
Right, and so, and because this is a learning curve for our rural community, that's so very much in addition to our rural community, we want to equip everybody in our rural community with it. So there will be a lot of opportunity, learning opportunities.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay, we don't have any minutes today, we'll take that up at our next meeting. Get, keep with Scott, appreciate your comments, and meetings adjourned.
September, give me a John to sign this, Chad to sign it, can't tell me how. The community will be 1.4 million, that's what you write into the amount.
What have you got in here?
I have these, I think the audience has a diabetic. They're really good.
No, I don't want one, I just.
They're really good.